It's Wednesday, May 15th, 2019. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, if you will join us, we'll start our Board Session with a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just waiting for a comment this morning.
Pretty close, but it was a little quick pace on the pledge, I thought.
Well, that's because I was trying to keep up with the Commissioner to my right.
You're the Chair, we were just following your lead.
No, you were leading. Yeah, we'll fix that. Well, good morning, everybody. It's good to see everybody's smiling face today. We have nobody signed up for public comment, so we'll go right into the consent calendar. And I believe it's you, Commissioner.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. And I'll read that. Under Business Services, approve the design-build contract with Certified Systems Incorporated for $163,000 to provide the design and install of an audible fire alarm system in Courthouse Square. Community Services, approve an order appointing Camber Schleg to the Marion County Fair as a key volunteer. Approve an order appointing Stacy Lake to the Marion County Children and Families Commission with a term ending January 31st, 2022. Approve Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon State Fair Council to extend the Facility Use Trade Agreement for asphalt repair and paving at the Oregon State Fairgrounds in lieu of the Fairgrounds Facility Use Fee for the Marion County Fair through June 30th, 2025. Finance, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality for testing of possible contamination on tax lot number R100485 in the city of Jefferson. Approve in Human Services, approve Amendment Number Two, the Contract Purchase Order with Cardinal Health 411 to add $160,000 for the purchase of opioid treatment medications under the Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for Pharmacy Cooperative Contract. And that's it.
I second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our first action item. Under Community Services, consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of May as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Marion County. Tamara, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Gatch, Director for Community Services. And yes, I've got a few little props here. May is Foster Parent Appreciation Month, and I'm here today with the proclamation to signify and to proclaim May as Foster Parent Appreciation Month. We in Marion County have been working hard for years at the task of trying to find enough foster parents in our community to provide the care that is needed for the number of kids who are in care. In Marion County, we have 592,000, excuse me, 590, thank goodness, not thousand, 592 children who are in foster care. We have 71 general foster care. This does not include relative care. So there are many children in our communities who go into care, who are lucky enough to have caring family members that take on the responsibility of raising them and providing guardianship. That leaves a huge amount of kids in our community that don't have that opportunity to be placed with a family member. On average, when you take out the relative care and you put that remaining number of kids on the number of foster families we have, the 71 foster homes, we're at an average of six to seven kids per home. That's a pretty heavy lift. If you're in, being, if you're used to raising kids in your family that are two to four kids, adding three more to that mix can be quite daunting. And families take this on every single day. I personally have foster parent stories from my family members who have taken on foster children, and I've just been at awe. I get the privilege of seeing them on social media and seeing all their activities that they do. They give these children who are, have the unfortunate life of not being able to be raised by their own family, but they get to have these caring, loving foster families that take them on and love them like their own, give them the special times one-on-one, giving them the birthday parties, taking them on outings, and just raising them in a healthy family environment. So family foster parents are so vital in our community's health and wellness. So today, in recognition of them, we, like I said, we have that proclamation before you. But I think because we have a viewing audience today as well, we have many different ways that our community members can help. So we have, you can volunteer. There's many organizations in our community that support foster families, support foster kids, and getting engaged, even if you can't take on a child in your own home, there are ways in our community to make a difference. You can donate. There are, there's countless things that are needed, and these foster families that take on all of these extra costs that are associated, yes, they get a small stipend, and it truly is not enough to cover the cost of raising a child. And, you know, summer camps is an expense that really couldn't be covered, and just on its own unless a family is well off. So those kind of donations can go through the Foster Parent Association and can help offset those costs. You can provide gift cards or appreciate those foster families in your own life, whether that's in your faith community, in your neighborhood, places of your employment, there's lots of places there. Offered to when you go to the store, how can you, you know, do you need me to pick up a loaf of bread? I remember fondly of even packing up my two now men, but boys at the time, packing them into the store because I forgot that gallon of milk. It's a task. And to think that I have to do that with seven, you need a large van to make that happen, right? So foster families are just such a jewel in our community, and the work that they do lasts for generations, and they are truly, I guess, they deserve this recognition and so much more. So with that, I present the proclamation for your consideration.
You can call him it.
Well, I just want to echo what you've said, and we're blessed to have so many good foster families here in Marion County. And I think one of them came a few weeks back and presented, and so I appreciate all the work that you do supporting our foster families and keeping us in front of our minds.
It's my pleasure.
I don't know where to go. You hear so many horror stories. I hope that's not happening in Marion County of ignored, dumped, whatever else. We're going to read this proclamation, I assume, in just a minute, talking about foster parents who open their hearts and homes. Yeah, it's awfully important that these kids not just be cast off, forgotten. So appreciate all the efforts that are being done, and especially those that you're doing.
Yeah, we go from Child Abuse Awareness Month to Foster Care Month, and so, yeah, we, we live our lives every day thinking just how blessed we are, and we sometimes forget about those that are not living the same life that we have. And so those that step up to change that are really appreciated, and we want to honor them with this proclamation this morning. So Commissioner, if you want to make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of May as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Marion County.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll read the proclamation if you want to start.
The matter of proclaiming May as Foster Care Appreciation Month, a proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting of May 15th, 2019, to proclaim May as Foster Care Appreciation Month. Whereas we recognize that the growth and development of children is of the utmost importance, and every child deserves a safe, loving, and stable home, and whereas many children in our community must be temporarily removed from their homes to ensure that the child's physical and emotional needs are addressed, and whereas foster parents who open their hearts and homes to support children whose birth families are in crisis play a vital role in providing a safe, strong foundation for children, and...
Whereas there are numerous individuals in public and private organization, the courts, and in the faith-based community who work to support the foster care system and recruit foster families, and whereas May has been designation, designated, excuse me, National Foster Care Month, and this year's theme is Foster Care as a support to families, not a substitute for parents, which emphasizes the importance of supporting foster families and honoring their critical role in keeping families together.
Now therefore be it resolved, the Marion County Board of Commissioners join with all those involved in the foster care system to thank individuals and families that provide support, affection, love, and security to the children in their care, as well as those organizations and agencies that support foster families and proclaim, proclaim the month of May as Foster Care Appreciation Month dated at Salem, Oregon, this 15th day of May, 2019.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And we will have these documents that I was holding up and more on our website, as well as in the Courthouse Square window this, this week.
Tam, I don't know if you've done this, or I just thought of it, or what, but do we have any, any activities for foster children or families at the county fair?
We provide, through the Children and Families Commission and the Community Services Budget, we have tickets that we give out to foster families called Children of Promise.
Wonderful.
And those are distributed to foster families.
And they can come anytime during the fair?
Yes, it's a free entry, as long as they come with an adult.
Maybe we can build on that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next action item is under Information Technology and Consider Approval of Purchase Order Contract with Presidio Networked Solutions Group LLC for $124,922.56 to provide and install a computer monitoring and logging system. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Emery for the Information Technology Department. You may be aware, you may be seeing more and more headlines related to cybersecurity events, including hackings that have been taking place, taking over cities as a whole, even state organizations. And part of our job is to make sure that we're safeguarding the county's, not only the information, but our systems. In order to do that, we have to put in layers of defenses, and they include actually partnering with both the federal, the state level, but also internally. And with me this morning is my information security officer, talking about another layer of that defense that we're proposing.
Hello, Mark Blackstone of the Information Technology Department. The Marion County IT Department has initiated a multi-year effort to improve the county's information security infrastructure to meet current and future business needs, as well as to safeguard county assets. The goal of this project is twofold. One, to address security audit findings identified through an independent third-party assessment sponsored by the Board of Commissioners, and to address findings from the Criminal Justice Information Systems Audit performed by the Oregon State Police. The proposed logging and monitoring system is used to collect and correlate data from multiple sources to provide real-time analysis of security alerts, such as detecting intrusions and vulnerabilities in our network. The contract contains the purchase of software and hardware, as well as consulting services to assist with configuration and deployment of the system. The supplier, Presidio, is contracted through the inter-local purchase systems, which provides standard government pricing and consistent technical support. We are seeking the approval of the purchase order in the amount of $124,922.56 for implementing the project and an annual support cost of $23,948.39. With that, Commissioners, we are pleased to assist you with any questions you have about this request.
Questions?
So I was reading this contract last night, and I still have trouble. What's a computer logging and monitoring system? What exactly does it do?
The computer logging and monitoring system will take logs generated by computer devices, servers, workstations, and network firewalls and other devices we have in our network, and stores them all into a single location. So we would have a single pane of glass, one console we can look at to see events happening throughout the county. So we would be able to track activity or quickly be notified if something malicious was taking place.
And what's, what's currently happening? What's the current system?
Each, each system currently actually generates its own set of information as logs, and it actually takes people to go through all those systems and all those logs to try to find the needle in the haystack. So when you see an event that may change something, we have to go through and manually go through and try to find where the challenge is occurring. This really aggregates, brings all that information from all those systems together into a single point so that it can actually raise our attention right where we see vulnerabilities. The sooner that you're able to address things like ransomware, the sooner you can keep it from spreading across the county. So this is really a preventive to give us that, you know, very immediate, you know, first few minutes alert so we can stomp out problems.
Got it. Thank you.
I think it was just yesterday, State Hospital had some kind of issue. Would this have been helpful in that kind of situation?
Absolutely. This, this has come with those things where you say, what keeps IT up at night? It's not as much keeping the systems going, which is very important to not impact the business, but it's losing control of our systems. We, we are ever vigilant, and as I indicated, we have to work really tight with the federal and the state level on these vulnerabilities that are just brand new, coming every day, and increasing on a daily basis.
So just a probably technical question about the contract. So it's $100,000 and some change, $101,000 to purchase the software, and it's $23,000 for the hardware and software support. Is that annually?
There's a reoccurring annual cost, and what's happening in IT is that rather than going from a one-time capital purchase, now because those vulnerabilities are changing so regularly and so fast, we have to subscribe to these services that provides the updates. So yes, that $23,000 in support maintenance is because of that real-time update process.
Should have bought software stock a long time ago.
I did, went broke, that's a fact.
Yeah. Man, I tell you, they're getting us everywhere. You know, Scott, it's interesting because we were just having this conversation about budget priorities, and this is another example of where we have to make some capital investments in the long run. We know that, and this is just a small amount of, of what that's happening because, yeah, well, I'll just say, we're going to be seeing you a lot more, I think, in requests for some capital projects in the future.
Certainly appreciate the support that the Commissioners have provided to date. We do, we are in a better place today by far. Again, each layer that we get in place, you know, I'm hoping we don't get to that point where we can actually kind of stabilize that we don't see you as much, nothing personal, but, but obviously to get some relief to the county with respect to capital.
Well, I had to call, well, I didn't, I never call. Sherry called Michael yesterday because I had this, I had this email that every time I even just went over the top of it, it shut down my system. And I'm freaking out because of all the stuff that's going on, and, and he came up and was able to delete it or do whatever it was. And then, as he's walking out of my office, and I had this other spam that, you know, it looked like it came from me, and I yell at him and say, hey, come back here, I think I got another one. It was, it's just, I mean, it's like, you're hypersensitive about stuff that's coming into your email box these days, and we all need to be, we all need to be really aware of that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We also have an education program for all the county staff that will be starting in July. Again, awareness is, is the primary key for us. Even if we put all the tools and technology in place, the people factor is always going to be there. So we're going to try to make it as simple for everybody, but also make sure they have the tools to make life a little easier. I can say that we have seen a pretty, you know, high increase in rises in those attempts, the fishing attempts. Some have been very creative, and so, yeah, again, we have to be ever vigilant. It's probably not going to go away anytime soon.
Yeah. I had one other comment, but I guess I'll save it. Something about some Commissioners and technology.
Well, actually, it works out good because I'm just going to explain that, how I do, how I evaluate these things. I look, price, it seem reasonable, does it look like it's going to be effective? And if it calls for me changing passwords, it's no. I don't see any of the failures in this one. I'd make a motion that we do approve Purchase Order 872589 Presidio Purchase. Presidio.
I second the motion.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Safe, technology-wise. Okay, next item is under Legal Counsel to consider approval of an order appointing Stephanie Schudler. Is that how I say that?
Skyler, I think.
Skyler?
Skyler.
Skyler as a temporary on-call hearings officer in Marion County. And our legal counsel, Jane, is here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Skyler. We would, at this time, we're asking the Board to approve an order appointing Ms. Skyler as a temporary on-call hearings officer. As you know, we have a very busy hearings office. Last year, our hearings officer heard 93 hearings, comprised mostly of land use and dog orders and dog hearings. We have one full-time hearings officer, and in addition, we do have up to three part-time backup hearings officers when she's unavailable or if there's a backlog. This year, we had two of our on-call hearings officers retire, so there was an opening, and we had a competitive recruitment, and we're very fortunate Ms. Skyler applied. She has five solid years of land use experience. She's a Willamette Law School graduate, and we're just really excited to have her join our team.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything to us?
No, just thank you for this opportunity, and I'm very excited and excited to be working with Ann, and, you know, I've appeared before her before, and she's, it's very smart and great to work with, so, thank you.
So Stephanie, what do you do, so this is a part-time? Do you do, do you practice law someplace else?
Yes, I, I, until this fall, I was at a private firm in Salem, Softfeld Griggs, and then recently started a part-time solo practice.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Willamette?
Yep.
Are you going to declare, are you in the same class?
We actually go on Law Review together.
We have some classes together.
So who finished higher? That's what I want to know.
We didn't graduate the same year.
We weren't in the same year.
Oh.
I think confidence was the highest of all.
I was just trying to find something out about the Commissioner here, so, you know, garbage hauler, hamburger flipper.
I didn't, I didn't know she was applying for this.
Attorney.
But I'm glad she did. I have confidence in her.
All right, so, well, welcome.
I got one minor question. Did you appear before us ever? They do...
One time I did.
I thought maybe.
With Alan.
And you thought we were pretty effective and...
Say yes, say yes.
Don't answer that question.
All right, thank you.
Who's motion?
Is it my motion? Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an order appointing Stephanie Skyler as a temporary on-call hearings officer for Marion County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service, appreciate it. Jane, thank you. And Jane, by the way, I was going to save this till later, but 183 last night and no bumpers.
We can't see that from that picture.
No, I'm sure. We'll, we'll wait till after we're done with business, I'll hold it up. It's 183.
There's a couple of strikes there, look at that. Look at those X's.
There was a turkey. The ladies all went gobble, gobble, gobble. I got three strikes in a row last night.
Photos can be doctored.
Ah, geez.
The skepticism of our legal counsel.
So we have Public Works here on a serious matter. Consider approval of an order appointing Wayne Rollins as Chair and Kyleen Zimmer as Vice Chair to the Marion County Parks Commission with terms ending May 31st, 2021. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brian May, Marion County Public Works, Fire and Water Services Division Manager. As mentioned before you today, we have consideration of appointment of our Chair and our Vice Chair for our Parks Commission. In a little background to this, our Parks Commission was established in 1958, and I have not, of course, not been there that long nor Wayne, but today, this group is serving us very well. They serve four-year terms, and we have a seven-member group. Our Parks Group has been very active, and they kind of keep us in line with new projects, new ideas, and kind of how we can improve our park system. In our March meeting, the Parks Commission nominated and voted unanimously the recommendation for the Board to appoint Wayne Rollins as Chair and Kyleen Zimmer as Vice Chair of the Parks Commission. This will be a two-year term. So a little background on Mr. Rollins, he's retired from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. He's a Salem resident and has been serving on the commission since October of 2012. Ms. Zimmer was previously the Assistant Director of Oregon Parks Department, Recreation Department, and is now employed with Oregon Health Authority, and is a resident of Silverton, and has been with us since June of '17. She was not able to attend today, but we were able to have Mr. Rollins, so if you'd like to introduce yourself.
You bet. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I worked both at Fish and Wildlife for about 15 years and State Parks for about 15 years, and recreation has been a lot of my life, and I'm glad that I've got an opportunity to share some of that with Marion County, and I'm hoping that as time goes by, the things that we do that we're successful at is a reflection of your desires for the Marion County Parks.
Thank you.
Well, if I could, I've got to serve as liaison the last year or so with the Parks Commission, can't make all the meetings, but Wayne's very effective and had Parks background. One thing they've done different, and I don't know where it came from, but I suspect Wayne's involved, but they've kind of not really adopted park, but they're actually getting out to them, bringing back reports, some little film of what's going on there, keeping everybody abreast of the changes, the uses, the possibilities. And, and as you know, we put more money into parks than the last several years upgrading, and having Wayne there has really helped to marshal that, so really pleased.
Great. Thanks for being the liaison.
Well, it's an easy one. Liaison would be just right.
Liaison.
Liaison. Liaison.
Commissioner?
Well, we went and saw some of the parks the other day, and I appreciate you, Brian, for organizing that. I was proud of our parks after that tour. We have some really nice parks.
If I could underscore that, both Brian and Russ, you folks have an excellent set of staff for Marion County Parks. Very fortunate to be able to work with them, so a lot of the progress that made is not so much the Advisory Committee, it's the staff.
Well, thank you for being willing to serve and being willing to work on keeping those parks beautiful.
You bet.
Okay, I got to get this in because I always get Scott's Mills when we talk about bridges, but now I'm thinking, you've taken them to San Salvador, I heard, you've at least looked at it.
We've had discussions, yes.
Discussions? You haven't had a tour?
Not, not yet.
Okay, I'll help you with that.
Yes, there's a tour planned to take our Public Works Director out there and take a look first.
Whoa. Is this, is this...
This is legitimate.
Is, is, is this where things are spawned? Where? What are we talking about?
That's our understanding, yes.
Huh?
That's our understanding, yes.
This is, this is, okay, it has something to do with him being here, I think, right? San Salvador?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not going to go, we're not going to go any deeper into this conversation.
It's a place that's near and dear to Sam's heart.
Think I'm just kidding, it's a legitimate space. It should have always been a county park. People think it's a county park, it's run by state parks or ignored by state parks, and it's, has a boat launch maintained by the Marine Board, not maintained either. That'd be a wonderful opportunity. It was the kind of go place in my youth on the hot days, and has very much potential. Now, it's timely because we just got some money in direction to have, well, it was the transfer of the school park, create some money for purchasing upgrade. This is legitimate county business, you guys. I don't like your attitude. All right.
The dean, the dean is laying down the law.
Just because we need to stop this, I...
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, go ahead, I'll have comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the order to appoint Wayne Rollins as Chair and Kyleen Zimmer as Vice Chair of the Marion County Parks Commission with terms ending May 31st, 2021.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes. Mr. Rollins, thank you for your service. Since 2012, you've been on the Parks Commission. And I know I got here in June of 2014, and Commissioners joined us a couple of years in a row. Brian, you came right shortly after that, right? 2015?
2016.
'16. The improvement and the changes in our park system in the last five years is just... Uh, the improvement and the changes in our park system in the last five years is just huge, tremendous. And, uh, the tour that we went on the other day, uh, the advisory committee, the role that you're playing, adopt a park, uh, the investment that, that we've been able to make, find some general fund dollars and hire some extra staff and, um, working with BLM, the Forest Service, the Sheriff's Department, um, it's just really great. It's, it's another example, last night, we were in Public Safety Coordinating Council talking about, which the public probably has no clue, we were talking about all the great things, you were their commissioner, that, uh, are happening because people are collaborating and getting out of their own silos, and this is another example that the public is benefiting from efficiencies in a system with all kinds of different organizations and they get to see the results of that. They don't know that it's a state park, county park, or whatever, they just want a nice park. And, uh, just wanted to say thank you for your service and we're, we're, um, looking forward to seeing you chair that committee and working with you in the future.
Appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And we were laughing, not, this is a total inside joke up here about this park that he's?
Promoting.
Promoting, and the reason he's here is because of that park, so, that's, we, we need to know that.
Spring love.
Motion, second, any further discussion? We need a vote and get through this, alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oh my gosh.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay.
Okay, our next item, oh, well, we're gonna, um, we're gonna go into Contract Review Board and we're gonna consider an approval of a class special procurement for Marion County Reentry Initiative for multiple contracts for services to provide successful reentry and prison diversion services. And Commander Wood and Camber are here to tell us about what this all means.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners and members of the board, my name is Camber Schlag, I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager here for Marion County.
Uh, Honorable Chair Cameron, Member, uh, Commissioners, Jeff Wood, I'm a commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
And we are before you this morning to talk with you about consideration of a class special procurement for the Marion County Reentry Initiative. We are here because we would like to issue multiple contracts to provide successful reentry and prison diversion services, that the Sheriff's Office would be able to issue these contracts with our standard community partners and also issue additional contracts should additional partners be able to come into our program. The use of this approach is to promote public interest by targeting the community providers who are trained and motivated to provide the necessary services. These contracts would be valid from July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. Um, in order to, uh, for you to approve these contracts, you guys need to consider, um, the justification for the special procurement, which is that they are unlikely to encourage favoritism or to substantially diminish competition and to substantially promote the public interest in a matter that could not be done so by doing an RFP or a bid or some type of a solicitation method. The justification for having these be a class special procurement is because throughout the program existence, which began in two thousand and five, the resources, funding and providers of the services has been an ongoing challenge. Due to the nature of the work and the requirements of the providers who work with correctional population, there are limited to providers willing to provide the services to the targeted clients. A significant amount of the funding comes from the federal and the community foundation grants and the Sheriff's Office does continue to seek additional funding for this program, um, throughout the grant period. Do you wanna add to it?
Uh, commissioners, thank you again for a moment of your time. Um, just to give a little color and context to this request, this is the third biennium that we have asked for the special procurement. Um, as background, the Marion County Reentry Initiative, as, as Camber has mentioned, has been in existence since two thousand and five in some form and, and what has, uh, started as a simple reentry sole source contract has expanded, uh, to include our justice reinvestment initiative associated with House Bill thirty-one ninety-four back in, I believe, two thousand thirteen. Uh, if you don't know, the Marion County Reentry Initiative, uh, supports a variety of things, uh, pre-release reach-ins, case management, education, treatment, housing and other educational and support services. And under its current model, I'll, I'll say a collaborative model, we have a wonderful array of partners that include, uh, including the Sheriff's Office, the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, Union Gospel Mission, Bridgeway Recovery Services, Health and Human Services, uh, Shemecate Community Colleges and the Pathfinder Network. Um, and really, the design is for subject matter experts to deliver their expertise, um, in association with the people that are, one, being diverted from prison and two, returning to our communities from incarceration. As Camber, Camber man, mentioned, we, although this has been a wonderful effort, we do have issues at times with some of our, uh, with treatment providers in that, um, although there are programs in our community, we are, in some ways, a high maintenance request in that we need both addiction, safe services, we also need those services to provide and address the criminogenic risk, those factors likely, uh, to predict recidivism or future criminal activity. Uh, you can't simply treat the addiction, you also need to treat the criminality that is associated with that individual. With the passage of, uh, Senate Bill two sixty-seven back in two thousand and three, any publicly funded programs need to be quote evidence-based. Um, those programs, what it, what terms as, as evidence-based is, uh, outlined in statute and we have to do an evaluation for those programs to show that those publicly funded programs are a good investment and actually are a good return on investment in terms of reducing the criminality and the recidivism, uh, within our community. I think I will add this, um, again, there is no favoritism towards this list, our expectations are outlined by Oregon Revised Statutes and Oregon Administrative Rules, um, and I believe I've said in the previous two biennial, uh, requests, that we want more evidence-based programs in Marion County. We continue within the Sheriff's Office to work with our, uh, community partners, if there is an entity that does wanna be part of this reentry initiative, we have program staff that work with them, uh, address the issues that they may have deficits in in terms of being able to pass this evaluation that we have to determine evidence-based practices and we will continue to develop this list and this collaborative model. Uh, with that, I'm of course available for questions if there are any.
First, I just wanna thank you for using the chair's, uh, correct title, I thought that was very appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
He's most honorable.
Well, at least he didn't repeat under his breath, I'm not sure how he got that, like the sheriff did.
I just wanna say that, uh, these folks do great work for our community. Um, I've worked with a number of them and, and met some of them and, um, I just think we're very blessed to have the partners we have and so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your work supporting them and, and, uh, building this program over the years.
Thank you, Commissioner. In our, in the presentation, it outlines a lot of those resources that we're working with too, so, um, uh, great work, it's been that long. It's two thousand and five, 'cause I remember having a meeting in the basement of the Capitol in the cafe with Commissioner Carlson and a few others at that time, Dick, I think, was there when we started the reentry, the, the reentry initiative.
Absolutely.
Or, you did, I was just along for the ride to help with some legislation at the time. Wow. Uh, any questions?
No.
Great work, we know the recidivism rate is reduced, um, you know, it fluctuates a little bit, but, uh, we've, uh, you know, as a team, again, going back to the collaboration with all these partners and the work that, that you lead, Jeff, uh, we've made a big difference in people's lives and, uh, the safety and, and the finances of our community, so, uh, great job.
Thank you.
So we need a motion?
Who's turning it? Me? Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the special procurement for the Marion County Reentry Initiative for multiple contracts for services to provide successful reentry and prison diversion services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much, thanks Camber for the work you do as well.
And key volunteer now, you know.
Right, key volunteer at the fair. Don't you have one of your, your children, is your, is your daughter heavily involved?
She was volunteer of the year.
Right. Like, uh, I'm going to, yeah. So we're gonna close out of the Contract Review Board, it is past nine-thirty, I'm gonna open a public hearing, finance, uh, public hearing to consider approval of the, uh, sale of, uh, tax foreclosed property, tax ID number R four one eight nine one to the Mills, to the city of Mills, that's an interesting one, to the city of Mill City in the amount of two thousand dollars and, uh, Leann and Jeff are here.
Morning commissioners, Jeff White, Chief National Officer for Marion County.
Uh, good morning, Leann Arant, uh, property coordinator, finance.
So, uh, Chair Cameron, commissioners, you have been made aware of this property on occasion, we've discussed it management updates, I believe some of you have visited the property. It is a piece of property up in Mill City near Hammond Park on the Santiam River that the county took through foreclosure in two thousand and fifteen for non-payment of property taxes. Property has been deemed non-buildable. The value has been reduced by the assessor's office. The city of Mill City has expressed interest in purchasing the property, uh, as it borders their park, they'd like to expand the park and currently have, um, citizens are, are using part of the area that is down on the riverbank. Marion County has no particular use for the property to keep, we do not believe that it's possible to sell the property at a public auction due to the incline of the bank, the non-buildable issue. City of Mill City has made an offer for two thousand dollars, as mentioned, to purchase it. Uh, we recommend that the board accept that offer. Once the city purchases it, the two thousand dollars goes into the tax title fund and ultimately any excess funds there are dispersed to local taxing districts. I don't know if you have any questions about it, uh, want to discuss further? Happy to answer any.
I'm gonna defer to Commissioner Brentano over there, you had some concerns about this, as I recall, and I, are you good?
Just not giving it away, two thousand dollars is almost giving it away, but, uh, I'm, I'm satisfied, it isn't buildable, uh, it can be used adjacent to the parks of people from Mill City and Marion County who have, uh, availability of the ground, it's good, put, put to a good use, the downside, the value, um, and taking it off the tax rolls, but I'm fine.
Okay, so we did look at this property, I know you actually climbed down and got into the poison oak.
I did.
And, uh, I stood up above and we know where it is and geographically it makes sense that they had adopted from liability standpoint and all those things, so at least we're getting two thousand dollars and, and, uh, getting it out of our, our portfolio, so.
And, and part of the conditions of the sale per our policy and statute is that they maintain the property for a public use, like a park, for at least twenty years.
Okay, good. So Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd, I would right now make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the sale of tax foreclosed property ID R one eight nine one to the city of Mill City in the amount of two thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, alright, so that's done, thank you very much, Leann and Jeff, for all the work you do. And particularly in this area. So we will, um, we will, um, well, public hearing's closed and we'll, uh, read the calendar, 'cause we forgot to read the calendar.
We did not, when?
Uh, two weeks ago, I think it was, somewhere, somewhere along the line, we forgot to read the calendar.
I don't believe it.
Was I missing, I wouldn't allow that.
Alright, well, we're not gonna forget today. Uh, today is Wednesday, May fifteenth, and we're in board session here in the center hearing room. Uh, this afternoon, at noon, uh, we have a SED Core Quarterly Board of Directors Luncheon located at the Center for Business and Industry, six twenty-six, High Street Northeast in Salem. At twelve-thirty, we have a Mid Valley Jobs Council, uh, located at the Willamette Workforce Partnership Boardroom, six twenty-six, High Street, Suite three oh five in Salem. This afternoon, at three o'clock in the afternoon, we have a Service District Meeting, Budget Committee and Budget Hearing, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. Tomorrow, Thursday, at nine-thirty in the morning, we have a Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer meeting and an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two A B D F H I, located in the Silverton Conference Room of this building. On Saturday, May eighteenth, at ten-thirty in the morning, we have the Kaiser Iris Festival Parade located, uh, at River Road between Lockhaven Drive and Glen Brook, Glen Brook Road in Kaiser. On Monday, May twentieth, at eight-thirty in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Silverton Conference Room of this building. On Monday, May twentieth, at nine in the morning, we have Management Updated, located in the Silverton Conference Room of this building. On Tuesday, May twenty-first, at three in the afternoon, we have a Behavioral Care Network Board and Budget Committee Meeting located at five five zero Hawthorne Avenue Southeast in Salem in Suite one forty. On Wednesday, May twenty-second, at seven-thirty in the morning, we have the Oregon Economic Forum located in the Salem Convention Center at two hundred Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. And on Wednesday, May twenty-second, at six in the evening, we have a board session in Town Hall located at the Saint Paul Community Hall, two zero two three nine Main Street Northeast in Saint Paul.
Why would I sign the year seventeen on anything?
Probably because I did.
I, did I sign seventeen? Yours looked like a seven, I did.
While you're checking, I think it's important for, yeah.
You wanna make sure that, you wanna make sure.
For our viewing audience to see, this is Commissioner, the Honorable Chair Cameron here, he, uh, went bowling yesterday, did quite well, looks like.
With the spare parts, uh, our bowling team in the office, I've said the last two weeks.
At least three strikes, score of one eighty-three, um, and, and without bumpers, is that right?
We're not sure, there's, they could've been.
But legal, legal counsel, uh, is going to research out to make sure the, the photo is not doctored.
That's, that's good, that's important, we wanna make sure we have accuracy here, uh, Jane, you see? Looks like, uh, the Honorable Chair was also wearing the team T-shirt, which is appropriate, so, uh, yeah, good job.
Forensic parts, they're looking for a sub next week, guys, Tuesday night.
I think Sam will go if it doesn't, uh, interfere with his yoga class.
Yeah, oh, that, so.
Don't, let's stop that right there, no, that never happened, but we, there's someone else.
So you notice, because, you know, I, you guys, when you do scheduling, you have to look at my schedule, I don't need to see yours because I, I.
I'm pretty sure you'll ever see it on there.
You notice that yoga is on my, on my schedule?
I just appreciate that you're healthy, I mean, you, you exercise, you, I, you know, yeah, yeah, no, I.
Well, I gotta keep my, I gotta keep my mind exercised to deal with, keep up with you guys. Alright, uh, any, uh, we did, what did we do last week? We talked about the five-year look, we did that before our board session.
Well, we did get a, and I'm perhaps repeating, but you led me think that, uh, there were some signs of budget's not gonna be so easy in the coming years, and we're gonna have to take a, a closer look, um, I, I've said this so many times, but John, for fifteen years, the budget's essentially this, that, uh, we're gonna get by this year, but next year's trouble. And then, let's say it goes on for fifteen years, but this time, and I know they look out five years, but this time, that lookout shows trouble not in five years, but in two, and it really means as we go into this budget process, we have to look for opportunities that, uh, what's a right, the, the, what do you, I'm sorry why I go blank on this term, but the rollover, the.
Roll-up.
Roll-up of costs, um, yeah, you can make them this year, but can you make them next? We gotta really look at it.
So, uh, I, a couple of key things, uh, that I participated in yesterday, I participated in a cultural assessment in a focus panel, um, which I thought they did a really good job, asking questions about, um, culture and, uh, my perception of what our culture is, what I think it should be, et cetera. Uh, Sheriff was in that focus panel, it was really, really well done, um. Um, it's interesting they didn't pick you.
That's probably better for the county.
Right, yeah, it's probably better for me. Oregon State Fair Council noticed we approved, um, our intergovernmental agreement with them, uh, today, on the, uh, paving, so that's gonna be a really good thing. Uh, I participated in, uh, Secretary of State Audit yesterday with, uh, about Regional Solutions, and it'll be really interesting to see how that comes out. Um, it wasn't anything that, it, it was actually, they explained it to me, that it was generated by the legislature, legislature asking for the audit to be done. It wasn't that they were picking on it or anything, the legislature...
There haven't been complaints or anything, have there?
No, I think the legislature just wants to see, is the program working, right? And, uh, um, you know, I said, well, she asked, one of the questions was, uh, how would you suggest we improved it? And I thought we've been, since James came here, we've been very, very effective, and of course, there's been a little stall with him, uh, carrying on too many jobs, and now we've got Jody in place, I think, will, will be really well. I said, the, the way I see it being more effective is to find more dollars for infrastructure for projects that would not, if not for those dollars, would not move forward. Um, and, uh, so, that was, that was interesting. What else? We already, Commissioner already told, told you about mo, most important part of my day yesterday was bowling.
We didn't get the details, though, you guys win?
Oh, I know. I, I, well, you, you don't really win...
They get, they all get the trophy, you know?
Yeah, it's a, it's a participation trophy. It's just the joy of playing.
Isn't that nice?
You, uh, so, the other, the other thing on a, the other thing, on a serious note, since you guys don't care about being serious, but I, I thought that Detroit Passage, uh, presentation that we had from Army Corps on Monday, that was really positive news. Are you still stuck in the silt?
A little bit. I was till Tuesday, but I'm getting out of it.
Um, it was good news that they have decided that the, the impacts were so great that they have to do it in the wet.
Yeah, I was grateful.
Uh, and that they've, they could come up with a hybrid design to help them be able to do it in the wet. And it'll be really interesting to see this project. If they move forward with it, if it gets funded, obviously, they gotta get the funding to do it, to see if they really can pull this off in the wet and build this thing.
The scope is enormous.
I know.
My goodness. The engineering involved in making that thing happen.
Dollars kept getting bigger and bigger. This is one point, though, where I'd like to think we made a difference.
Oh!
Because they were rolling along and this is how we do it.
They said that this was, this was an example where the environmental impact study, the scoping, really made a difference. They were not thinking about the downstream impacts.
But how could you not? But anyway, that's what they say.
Well, hey...
It's a different level, I know.
They're dam operators, right? I mean, they build stuff. They, they, they're Army Corps. They go out and put a bridge across the river, that's all they care about, they, you know, they gotta get from here to there. Um, yeah, so, the public input made a difference, yeah.
Yeah, it was great to see our system work. It was great to see them respond to the input.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get, I think when they do these presentations around, they're gonna get some, some, uh, attaboys from the public. I hope so. And, uh, you know, that, that's only one small piece, obviously, of what's going on with our water and, um, but that, that would be a...
I have to tell a little story.
A victory.
So, the Kelly that was there, their environmental officer, she was there in Dayton, and, uh, my last meeting with her wasn't so friendly. You could have seen the darts coming from her eyes. Uh, and, and she does a wonderful job, I'm not really trying to criticize her. In fact, she's really come, helped us. But, uh, my last meeting, if you heard me ask, uh, were you in Dayton? Yeah, I thought, I knew it was her. And, uh, boy, there were some vicious looks came out that night. It's all right.
But it's all coming out in the end.
If you noticed Monday, when I said something about, take that number and divide it by two thousand fish?
Oh, yeah.
That her number was, oh, well, what is about the...
What about all the fish that have died over the last sixty years?
Like, okay, I know I'm not going there, because that is not what we're about here today.
I'm just glad that everybody came together and, and came up with a solution that'll work for the fish and work for the people and work for...
Well, we'll see if it'll work for the fish, because, uh, they haven't proven that it does, and, and if you noticed, if you noticed, and that, I think that was the thing either you brought up or Sam brought up, that, that timeframe was a lot longer because of this one project than another designed and...
Something like nine years or something to complete.
Before the fish collection facility, so, we're talking ten years from now is when they'll start to collect these fish. Um, meantime, we're still gonna continue to catch everything at Mento and move it up and, you know, hope it gets through. I should just get a net out there and...
Right, my head is...
Grab those little things and...
You can help. You should do your part.
Drag a net through the, when do the, when do the fingerlings come back?
I don't, I don't know, just scattered.
So, they're spawning, so, 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 spring Chinook are coming up now, probably, right?
Yes.
So, this would be a good time to tour that facility, if you wanna see them, get some fish. And then they put them in a truck, and they take them up to Brighton Bush, and they put them in this tube. It was really interesting, the first time we toured with ODF and W, you were there, remember, and, and ODF and W took us to this launch facility that Army Corps designed? And the ODF and W guy said it didn't work because it was so steep, these fish would go down, and they'd skip across the river and hit the other side. So, ODF and W, remember, we talked about that?
Yeah, we don't use this anymore.
We don't use the chute anymore. I mean, just stuff like that, that they spent money on that, that didn't work, because they had to do it. And, uh, uh, anyways, but seeing, seeing that whole process take place is very interesting.
This is just minor, personal to me in light, but tonight, we, uh, been doing it for twenty-five years, I expect, uh, choosing Rotary Student of the Month from the Canyon Area. Student of the Year, actually, excuse me. We give four thousand dollars minimum a year. Uh, I've done it for...
Scholarship?
Yeah, for over twenty-five years. It's our little club selling strawberries, you know, that's, uh...
That's great.
It's a pretty good accomplishment. I know what's really mattered. I told this story before, but I think of a, uh, I can't remember her first name, her